I agree, Mrs. Johnson.
Muscatine City Council. Fran, could we have you do the roll call, please?
Councilwoman Ray Walt.
Here.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Nat Fig.
Present.
Shahadi.
Present.
Finum.
Present.
Phillips.
Present.
Red.
Present.
I'll present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Do you want to stand, please stand, cite the pledge with us, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'm acting mayor pro tem tonight, the mayor's out of town, so, under the communications from citizens, we have a presentation by Joni Axel. You said you only needed a minute?
Joni Axel, Community Program Manager for the Blue Zones Project Muscatine, two minutes is what I said, Phil.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Anyway, I did just want to come, I've been trying to visit with the city council at least quarterly or thereabouts, and since I was here last, a number of wonderful things have been going on, particularly related to the city, as you know, the city was awarded a work site, Blue Zones work site designation, that's a lot of hard work and commitment on the part of the city and its staff. The second thing that's happened is the City of Muscatine's Complete Streets policy has been named one of the top policies in the nation, and I think you should all feel very proud of that, and many of you had something to do with its design and its features. The third thing I'd like to do is explain that we are engaging with some wonderful projects in the city. They have to do with food, which I think is not something all of you thought cities had much to do with most of the time, but one of them is, of course, the community gardens, which I think you're going to hear about or have already heard about from last meeting. A second one is the very energetic, hopeful pilot project to have outdoor eating, in outdoor dining, we're calling it dining, outdoor dining in the, in the city this spring. So that's, you'll have to keep your eyes open for that, and we're trying to work with the city staff and do what is necessary with the entrepreneurs who are willing to kind of take a risk on that, so, we'll, more to follow on that. And the third one is that we are hoping to have more healthy choices with concessions and vending, you know, because we do see a lot of young people and their parents and families over the summer with our fine soccer field, our fine kentstein, and the aquatic center, so, we're working, when those are kind of developing, developing projects. In the meantime, I shared with you, you have, each have a handout, which is really sort of a freeze frame of the certification, the certification hopeful path we're on, I will not go over all of it, but you will see that we've gone all the way up to 10 designated work sites. We have two designated restaurants, we have, the school system is working, and not quite there yet, but working hard to get on its, get its three schools designated. The cities, we call it the city, city bundle, it's a series of activities that the city is required to do, many of which you've already met, and more to go, right Greg?
Yes, thank you.
We also have met, or we're not quite at, but we have leaped ahead with our engagement numbers, we have 300, 3,564 pledged takers who are part of the Blue Zones Project, that's what our goal is, and we are at 3,232 today. And then the last thing I think we spoke about last time was there are two grocery stores that are certified, and that is the number we need. We have several restaurants that are working hard to become certified, or designated restaurants, and so we'll hope that the community does patronize those restaurants as we go down the line. Happy to answer, any questions?
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Sounds like they have some momentum going.
There is some momentum going, thank you, Scott, that's nice.
Thank you, Joni. Okay, the next presentation we have is by Ann Meeker concerning the Iowa reinvestment district program application. Ann?
Ann Meeker, Muscatine Downtown Investors. It looks like I'm going to be here all night, but not really. I believe everybody on council has received the update on our Hotel Convention Center project that we sent out via email. If you did not receive that for some reason, let me know, and I'll get a copy to you. We're here tonight to just briefly make council aware of a relatively new program, passed the legislature last year, and the administrative rules have just been released recently. I think, and people that we've discussed this program with, believe that it could really help to move our project forward. The basics of it is there is a pre-application process that must be filed, and it must be filed by the city, the municipality is the requirement. The kicker here is the window is March 1st to March 15th, so March 15th is your last day to get that pre-application in. Upon approval of the pre-application, then a final application is submitted. It, it gives the board an opportunity to provide some feedback, if needed, on the pre-application, but quite frankly, in the administrative rules, it says that the board will be more likely to fund those who have all of the information in the pre-application. So, we're going to work to accomplish that. The city's responsibility, other than filing the pre-application, is to create the district by ordinance after final approval of the project. However, you have to submit the intent to do it, this is our special counsel with us tonight, you have to explain your intent to establish the district and provide a map with the pre-application. So essentially, you do everything to create a district short of putting the resolution through with a vote. Then it has to be formal after the final application. It's, it can be up to 25 acres, and there aren't a lot of rules about the actual district itself, you can't have overlapping districts, but I, I don't think we're going to apply for two. Some communities may, I don't know at this point. There's some record keeping, obviously, involved in the program on the part of the city, and some other requirements to meet in the pre-app, and we're currently clarifying that with the project manager, who's in charge of this program with IEDA. An eligible project, you might want to know what that is, it's a vertical improvement constructed or substantially improved within a district, and that's basically it, a vertical structure or something that is substantially improved. To the extent possible, the board will approve projects that are the most likely to improve the quality of life in the city, the region, and the entire state, to be unique to the city, the surrounding region, and the entire state, and to substantially benefit the economy of the municipality, the city, the surrounding region, and the entire state. The program encourages part of the project to involve retail, but new retail establishments cannot exceed 50% of the total proposed capital investment. We do have a retail component in the hotel, and it is certainly not 50% of the capital investment that we'll be making, so, the monies for the program come from a portion of sales tax and hotel motel tax generated by the project, in other words, not from everybody else that may simply be inside that district, but generated from the project that's collected, and then a portion is remitted to the city, and then the funds are reinvested in the project to fund it, sort of after the fact. And that can be as much as over 20 years, it can also be shorter. From what we've read, it looks like the potential is in the $10 to $12 million range for our particular project. Obviously, there's a lot more involved, that's what all this stuff is about, but I didn't want to try and wade through the entire thing until you had an opportunity to look at the pre-application and look at some of the administrative rules. So I'm leaving a copy with everybody for your leisurely reading.
Okay.
In case you can't sleep at night, that will do it. We will be back March 6th to make a full presentation and answer any questions that you may have. I have already spoken with the project manager once, and I anticipate speaking to her fairly frequently throughout this process of the application. Obviously, we'll be working on the application between now and March 6th. There's a lot of the application that comes from information that we have, so it's not like the city has to come up with absolutely everything in it, so when you're reading through that, recognize that, that some of it is going to come from us, from the consultant that's been working with us, some of the information that was in the packet will be updated, that sort of thing. So, with assistance from Steve Boka and Greg Jenkins, we're hopeful that we'll be successful in this attempt. This is what's known as dump the information and run.
Before you, before you leave, Ann, is there anyone on council that has questions for Ann?
Do you have to repay the, did you say in the neighborhood of $10 million?
No.
You don't have to repay it?
No, that's the amount that could be remitted, it's collected as a portion of retail sales tax and hotel motels, hotel motel, that's a tough one to say, that's generated by the project.
Okay.
And it's, it's given back to the city, which technically would be the city's to begin with, in some form, it will be remitted, obviously, to the state, but that portion comes back to a special fund to the city to help fund the project. Thank you.
Any, anyone else have any questions?
All right, deal.
Okay, thank you, Ann, and I appreciate the email with, I opened that up, and there were five attachments, and a lot of information.
It's a lot, it's a lot of information, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else in, that's present, who would like to make a comments to get to the council, that's, of something that's not on the agenda? Okay. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. The consent agenda, the following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion, there will be no separate discussion on these, these items unless council members so request. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes items 6A through C, 8A through G, filing of communications, 12A through C, and tonight's bills totaling
So moved.
Second, Your Honor.
Motion by Osama, second by Bob, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Okay, public hearings. This public hearing concerns a proposed institution of, institution of proceedings to enter into a loan agreement and borrow money in the amount not to exceed $2.6 million. This loan agreement is for constructing street improvements, acquiring ambulance equipment, constructing improvements to the municipal airport, and installation of an emergency siren. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. At this time, is there any comments from the public?
Move to close.
Second. Motion by Osama, second by Scott. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. This public hearing concerns a proposed institution of proceedings to enter into a loan agreement and borrow money in the amount not to exceed $40,000. This loan agreement is for constructing improvements to the municipal library. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is, is required, is, now is the time for public to comment. Move to close.
Second.
Okay, motion by Scott, and second by Tom. And any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? 7-0, the motion passes. This public hearing concerns a proposed amendment to the, to the consolidated Muscatine urban renewal area. The city is considering the use of tax increment financing in support of, of the H.J. Heinz Company's expansion of their manufacturing facilities, operation, and workforce within the urban renewal area. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for public to comment. Move to close. Motion by Tom.
Second.
Second by Jeanette. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? 7-0 vote. This public hearing concerns a proposed development agreement with H.J. Heinz Company, including annual appropriation tax increment payments. The previous public hearing concerned the proposed amendment of the consolidated Muscatine urban renewal area to allow for the use of tax increment financing in the support of H.J. Heinz Company's expansion. This hearing concerns a proposed development agreement with H.J. Heinz Company. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. Now is the time for the public to comment.
Move to go, close.
Move to close by Jeanette.
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Bob. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. The next item on the agenda is hearing concerning the proposed imposition of civil penalties for violation of tobacco law, and I'm going to go to Greg.
Great, thank you very much. A few years back, the city, working with Jennifer Lerner, our city prosecutor, who I'm going to ask to go ahead and work her way up to the podium, who will conduct the public hearing for you tonight, had the option to capture civil penalties and associated, associated with this type of activities. If the city does not collect the civil penalty or the civil fine, that fine would be collected by the state, so the, at the time, the discussion was to, to keep those, or to keep that revenue local rather than sending it to the state, and that's essentially why we're here tonight, is to hold that hearing and certainly allow the, the company to object if they attend or present evidence, but with that, I'm going to turn it over to our city prosecutor.
Thank you, Greg, very much, and thank you, council members. I actually have to somewhat prove my case to you that there was a violation of our taco, tobacco enforcement laws, and that Hy-Vee Incorporated is the entity that violated that law. The first thing I'm going to pass around is the actual tobacco permit that Hy-Vee Incorporated took out. Then what we do, at least twice a year, is do tobacco enforcement through our police department here, and this is their tobacco enforcement program. And we have high school confidential informants who go in with IDs, and we see if a business sells them tobacco, in other words. When they do violate, then they are cited. In this case, we did have our confidential informant go into Hy-Vee Gas, they were able to purchase tobacco products, specifically Marlboros. The employee who actually sells it then gets a citation, the citation is, is charging the person under state law that they violated the tobacco enforcement laws. When they enter a plea of guilty, which she did, and pays the fine, then we go after the big corporate entity. They are required, obviously, to make sure that their employees do not sell tobacco products to people under 18, and we would ask at this point in time that you assess for their first violation a civil penalty of $300, and that would be normally for our mayor to sign, but I would like you all to review it, and then, of course, I would be asking that you sign it. At that point in time, they have 30 days to send that money to our finance department. If after that 30 days, they fail to send in the $300 cash, then they lose their tobacco privileges for, it's suspended for 14 days, and eventually, the attorney general's office then would go after them.
So they suspend their permit?
Their permit, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I missed a little bit of that last part.
Sure.
Back up about 60 seconds, will you?
Certainly.
Could you rewind?
Sure, I, I will try.
Okay.
What happened is a, a young woman for Hy-Vee sold a tobacco product.
The 300 bucks, so that was from...
That is a civil penalty for the corporation.
Right.
If they don't pay it within 30 days, then they lose their tobacco permit for 14 days.
So that's automatic.
That is automatic. Just like the civil penalty, I, I know we're having a hearing in front of you, but this is pretty automatic also under our state law. If we didn't seize it...
Not interested in what's pretty automatic.
Oh, okay. If we didn't take it, the attorney general's office would go for it.
But they get fined $300 if an employee does this?
No matter what, yes.
No matter what.
And that's on a first offense, the amount of the, the civil penalty goes up from there.
What does the employee pay?
The employee pays, and I can't remember what the citation showed.
100 dollars. Is it 50?
100 dollars. There's a rate, I don't remember what it was.
She paid for a fine.
He says 100.
Okay.
50 bucks.
50, 50?
Got it.
And does that escalate if that same individual, the working for Hy-Vee, makes another sale in six months?
That's a, a potentiality by the judge, that would be automatically, ultimately, excuse me, decided by the judge.
Okay.
Yeah.
You do this audit every establishment, twice a year?
At least twice a year, and, at least twice a year, sir, and we also do it different times of the year, obviously, we, we want to make sure, and this was our only business, I, I must commend the City of Muscatine's businesses, this was the only business who violated it this time around, so...
Is there also another penalty for the corporation, like a fine that the, the individual salesperson received? Is there a non-civil fine, criminal misdemeanor, fine, whatever, for the corporation also? Or is it just this $300 civil fine?
It's just a $300 civil fine.
Okay.
And the fine would be assessed and due anyway, it's just a question of whether the money goes to the state or the city?
That is correct, sir.
Yes, a couple years back, I apologize, I don't remember, at this time, it was two, two or three years ago, we preserved our right to keep those fines local rather than the AG's office instituting those fines.
I didn't catch your name.
Sure, Jennifer Lerner, L-E-R-N-E-R.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Okay, so what happens now? If, if council doesn't take any action?
If council doesn't take...
I mean, it's a public hearing, so...
Right. If council doesn't take any action, if the council chooses not to, to sign the document, then I notify the attorney general's office, and they will go for the $300.
Okay.
But, tonight, Jennifer, count, do you need council to take specific action authorizing this, the, the mayor pro tem signature, or do you simply need them to make a motion to close the public hearing, and that will suffice as action? Do you need specific action?
I do need specific action, partially because we run under a very close timeline, and if we don't act, then the attorney general's office will.
Okay, so...
So would the, would the proper action be to take action and then go out of the hearing, or to go out of the hearing and then take action?
Actually, because it's a public hearing, everything is supposed to remain public.
Well, well, anyway.
Right.
Pretty public right now.
But, but I mean, even your, your discussions, that should all be public.
And it would be, because if, if we want to close the public hearing, and then we can take action immediately after, if that's the will of council, it'd still be public, yeah.
Yeah.
So let's, let's go ahead, and, do you have a question, Osama?
Yeah, so what we are trying to do, just keep the $300 in the city instead of going to state, is that what we are voting on?
That is correct.
Thank you.
It's who gets the money. It's one of the mons, too. Okay, so let's, let's have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
By Osama, second by, by Tom. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion for the public hearing is closed in 7-0, and we need to take action to...
Authorize your signature.
Authorize the signature of that.
Whatever the title of the form is.
Okay, the, it just, therefore, you're ordering the, the permit holder to remit the $300 to the City of Muscatine, honor before April 3rd, 2014.
Yes.
So we have a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Second by Tom, second by Scott. Any questions? You need a roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay, Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
I vote aye. Scott?
Aye.
Ann, Mike?
Aye.
Motion, or resolution, motion, whatever, passes 7-0.
Sign it.
And this has, this has Mayor Hopkins on here, can I still sign that as?
Yes, yes, since, since Mayor Hopkins is in here, you're acting there. Thank you, Bill.
Okay. Pass it. Okay. From the City Administrator's section of the agenda, presented for city council's consideration is a resolution combining the, and authorizing loan agreements and future issuance of general obligation purpose bonds, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same as discussed during the 2014-2015 budget process, the city is planning to issue a total of $2,575,000 in general obligation bonds to be dated June 2nd, 2014. Of this amount, 2.6 million is for the construct, constructing of street improvements, acquiring ambulance equipment, constructing improvements to, to the municipal airport, and installation of emergency siren, and 40,000 is for constructing improvements to the municipal library. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Bob?
Second.
Second by Jeanette. Any questions? Discussion? This is a roll call vote, Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
I vote aye. Scott?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
And Jeanette?
Aye.
And the motion passes seven zero. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving an urban renewal plan amendment for the consolidated Muscatine urban renewal area. The city is considering the use of tax increment financing to support the H.J. Heinz Company's expansion of their manufacturing facilities, operation, and workforce within the urban renewal area. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Scott?
Second.
Second by Osama. Any discussion? Okay, Scott?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes seven zero, or the resolution passes seven zero. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving a development agreement with H.J. Heinz Company, and authorizing annual appropriation tax increment payments, and pledging certain tax increment revenues to the payment of the agreement. In previous actions, city council took action to approve an amendment to the consolidated urban renewal area. The next step in this approval, excuse me, the next step is to approve the development agreement in support of H.J. Heinz's expansion, company's expansion, of their manufacturing facilities, operation, and workforce. Is there a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Tom?
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Bob. Any discussion? Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
I vote aye. Scott?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution authorizing the internal advance of funds for the Weed Park project. Cities in Iowa are required to certify the amount of TIF funds to be claimed for each TIF district no later than December first of the year, prior to the fiscal year for which the funds will be collected. The city has budgeted to fund the new Weed Park maintenance building from incremental taxes from the northeast urban renewal area that was amended in recent years to include properties in the Colorado Street area. In November 2013, the city council approved an internal advance in the amount of nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars for the architectural services for the new maintenance building. The action tonight provides for the internal advance of four hundred and five thousand dollars for the balance of the project cost. This internal advance loan will be repaid over a three-year period from fiscal year 2014-2015 through 2016-17. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
A motion by Jeanette?
Second.
Second by Scott. Any discussion? Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
I vote aye. Scott?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Tom?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on the annual application for state and federal transit funds for fiscal year 2014-15. This public hearing will be held on Thursday, March twentieth, 2014, at seven PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Jeanette.
Second.
Osama and Tom. Any discussion? Osama?
Aye.
I vote aye. Scott?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution awarding and approving the contract and bond for the Cedar Street Water Adjustment Project. Four bids were received for this project with a low bid from Salzburger Escavating in the amount of sixty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The engineer's estimate for the project was seventy-three thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Thanks, Tom.
Second.
Scott. Okay, any discussion or questions? Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
I vote aye. Scott?
Aye.
And Mike?
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution approving the contract and bond for the Cedar Street Reconstruction Project. At its February sixth, 2014, meeting, the city council awarded the contract for this project to All American Concrete in the amount of three million five hundred and one thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. Excuse me, it is now necessary to approve the contract and bond. Is there a motion to accept the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Tom?
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Bob. Any discussion?
Just have a quick question here, is All American Concrete did the Clay Street? They were awarded Clay Street?
They did Dawson. I don't know about Clay.
Clay Street was, the general was Avith, and they're out of northeast Iowa. They had a sub, which was All American Concrete, who actually poured the concrete on that. The majority of the Clay Street project was concrete, probably sixty percent of it.
And we were delayed quite a bit doing that?
Well...
By recall.
It was, we had some issues getting them on the site, but let me tell you, when they got on the site, they really, they were catching up. We had a problem on that project, is when we milled the top off of the bridge there at the low point, just east of Isaac, we found that the bridge deck had deterioration on it, was covered with asphalt. We didn't know how badly it was really deteriorated, so that slowed the project up, because we weren't able to just continue and work right across the bridge. We had to stop there, and then, if you remember, we spent money the next year repairing the bridge and patching on either side.
But this last year, All American did Dawson Street, and it went smoothly, quickly, and we had no issues.
Yeah, very well, yep.
So you're satisfied with, you're satisfied with the award?
Yeah, you know, DOT reviews this, and they go through all their paperwork. There's a lot of requirements that are federal requirements that we have, Davis making wages, and it's all standard for federal.
Any other questions, Osama?
No, thank you, Jeanette.
Anyone else? No other further discussion. Tom?
Aye.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Osama?
Aye.
I vote aye.
Aye.
Scott and Mike?
Aye.
And the motion, or the resolution passes seven zero. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve Spring Cleanup Week for April twenty-first through the twenty-fifth, 2014. This event will help, or, excuse me, will be held in conjunction with Earth Day and Keeping Muscatine Beautiful, and assist residents in cleaning up their yards and their homes. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Okay, Scott, and then Bob. Any comments or questions? Anyone?
Hope the snow will be melted by then.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the motion passes seven zero. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the use of Taylor Park for the Community Garden Project. This project stems from the Leadership Muscatine Program and is a Blue Zone Initiative. The proposed community garden project will be self-sustaining. Three grant applications submitted to Hy-Vee were funded totally for two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Taylor Park was chosen as the site for the location of the community gardens. Is there a motion to approve the request?
So moved.
Motion by Jeanette?
Second.
Second by Osama. Any questions?
Please. How is Hy-Vee thanked for this?
I think we're going to have someone tell us that.
Other than sending it with the three hundred dollar. Thanks.
Sending them this thing, thank you. Sorry, what was your question again?
How do you thank Hy-Vee for their generosity?
How do we thank Hy-Vee for their generosity? A nice thank you? No, I mean, they're gonna be a part of the program. They are giving us a banner to put up on the site that congrat, or, you know, gives recognition to them for, you know, being a part of our community garden project. We'll make sure that we put that up on the site that recognizes Hy-Vee as a donor to this project.
So in other words, we have no plans to thank them?
Yes, yeah, and any suggestions that you guys may have, we can...
I think the mayor and council should thank them officially, and for their generosity, especially considering the other thank you...
The offset. Well, this, the, this comes from the corporation, Hy-Vee. Right. Of course, the payment for the fine will come from the corporation, too.
The corporation. They can just deduct from the...
I understand, I understand.
Well, and the local Hy-Vee is gonna help with education, right?
Yes, yep, the local Hy-Vee is gonna help with cooking classes, dietary classes, you know, gardening classes in conjunction with Iowa State Extension and Master Gardeners.
Just consider it a little lump in the garden, that fine.
Yeah, feel free to allocate that three hundred dollars to the garden.
When we go back to the next study.
There you go.
Being thanked.
Well, city council could allocate that three hundred dollars to the community garden if they so desired.
So...
That's a great idea.
So the mayor and city council will...
You're making Nancy...
Make a motion.
Well, I got that three hundred dollar spent.
Maybe do something with the money, maybe.
Okay, any other questions?
We could devote the three hundred dollar fine to something that they'd be interested in.
Make a motion to allocate the three hundred dollars to the, to the...
Gardens.
To this program, right? Right? Could certainly do that.
Community garden project.
Yep.
It's a good idea, though.
So is that a motion, Scott? Or is that yours, Mike?
Not mine, I robbed it from Scott, who got it from somebody else.
Nobody wants to take it?
I'll make the motion.
Scott, Scott's gonna make a motion.
Just to get it going.
That the three hundred dollar fine be given to the community garden project, is that what you want?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Bob. Any further discussion?
We should ask Nancy if she had the three hundred spent already.
It was not budgeted.
Yeah, not yet, okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion, that motion passes seven oh. We probably should've had the, should've had the motion on, we have to have a voice vote on the original motion.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so for the original motion that we read about the Hy-Vee...
So moved.
So, we've got a motion by Jeanette, and a second by Osama, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, council, appreciate it.
Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve a postage machine, or, excuse me, postage equipment lease. Current five-year lease agreement with Pitney Bowes for the city's postage equipment expires this month. Bids were solicited for the new lease from the two vendors, and the low bid was Pitney Bowes for six-month lease totaling eight thousand five hundred and nine dollars and eighty cents. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Tom?
Second.
Second by Scott. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven oh. All right.